Okay, good afternoon, everyone. We're gonna get started. This is the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners. We have two public hearings set at the same time. It's November 25th, 2024. It is 3:34 PM. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board. To my left is Commissioner Emily Claus. Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier and Commissioner Carolina Mahia are participating virtually, and Commissioner Edwards is excused, and he will catch up from the recording. We have two public hearings. I'm gonna take the Program Year 2023 HUD CAPER Report first, because we usually get very little public comment. We can get that one done. I know more people are here for the agriculture zoning, in terms of the signup at least. So it won't take too long, but we need to get them both done. So the purpose of this first public hearing is to accept and consider public comment regarding the 2023 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAPER, for Thurston County. An annual summary report explaining how federal Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program, or HOMF, were expended for the period of September 1st, 2023, through August 31st, 2024. This is a hybrid public hearing. Those wishing to testify have joined in person by Zoom, emailed in comment, or mailed in comment. If you wish to testify, please visit the Thurston County homepage online, select announcements of public hearings on the left-hand side. The information to join this public hearing remotely has been posted there. If you do not wish to testify, but would like to listen and follow along, watch the livestream through the Thurston County YouTube channel to help us manage attendance. Procedurally, we will start with Alex Purce, Affordable Housing Program Manager, to provide information on this topic and answer any board questions. I'll read through names on the signup sheet, and then we will go to those on Zoom. You do not need to... Your name will be called if you're on Zoom and you wish to testify. Your name will be read aloud. You have four minutes to testify. Time may not be given to another person. When you are called on, please state your name and address for the record. So the public hearing is open, and Alex will present the background information of the proposed amendment. Actually, this is, I think, on the report. Summarize any written comments we will have received, and provide any additional information requested by the board.
Great. Thank you so much, Commissioners. Good afternoon. My name is Alex Purce. I'm the Affordable Housing Program Manager in the Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention. We may be able to get a PowerPoint up. It was attached to the AIS, if that's helpful. Sorry. So I'll just go through my slides, but maybe we'll be able to show them as well. So the Program Year 2023 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report is something that our office submits annually to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. This report provides information on accomplishments and progress made towards established consolidated plan and annual action plan goals. Our current consolidated plan is for the period of program years 2023 to 2027. So this CAPER must be submitted to HUD within 90 days of the close of our grantee's program year, which this year will be November 29th. And we report on both Home Investment Partnership and Community Development Block Grant, or CBG, programs in our CAPER. So for... We have on a slide, we have a couple of tables that show various CDBG accomplishments. So the accomplishments that were made this program year in our Community Development Block Grant funds. We have housing and public infrastructure activities, and we also have public service activities that we're reporting on this year. The number of households or individuals served through our housing and public infrastructure activities is 18,272, and there's a total of 380 individuals that were served through public service activities. So the Program Year 2023 funds were awarded through the City of Lacey. So many of our public... All of our public service activities, individuals were served from Lacey. But our housing and public infrastructure activities that we're reporting on this year come from a variety of locations throughout our county. Some of these projects were funded with earlier program year funds, such as the Yom Dog Park, the Tenino Quarry Pool, and Quarry House, and Community Action Council's Monarch Expansion. And we have two... We also have two pictures. One of the splash pad, the Quarry Pool, and then one of the City of Yom Dog Park. The next slide is the Home Investment Partnership accomplishments. So for Program Year 2023, Homes First purchased a single-family home to utilize as affordable rental housing. And Family Support Center also completed construction on the landing, which added 62 units of affordable rental housing, which includes three home-assisted units. There are currently other home projects that we expect to make progress this year and be reported on in the Program Year 24 CAPER, and that includes the recently opened Lotus Court Habitat for Communities, Talitian Town Homes, and then additional accessory dwelling units for affordable housing by Homes First. I believe that is all that I have today. We haven't received any public comment as of yet on this report. We expect to submit it this week. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Commissioner, could I see the other Commissioners?
Oh, I can see the Commissioners.
Sure. Give me one second.
Thumbnail thing. Commissioner Mahia Fournier, any questions for Alex?
I don't have any questions. I'll have comments during comment time, but I'm familiar with this, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Then let's go to public testimony. As far as the signup sheet, Rita?
Oh, that's wrong. I'm here for the ag land.
I was wondering, but just checking. Anyone else? All the other names are for the second hearing. Anyone else here in the boardroom to get public comment on the CAPER? No. And online, we don't have anyone. So there is no public comment. And that's typical for this report. So any discussion from Commissioners before we consider closing the public hearing? Nope? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to clo... Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Fournier.
I just wanted to thank staff. I've participated in the CDBG funds for like 10 years, or since it started. We became an entitlement county, and I've seen how transformative it has been to just the local communities. So I want to say thank you to Alex and all the rest of the staff.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second, close public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Public hearing is closed. And we have the opportunity to have a motion to accept the report and submit its submittal to the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
I move to accept the proposal and move it forward to HUD.
Second.
Motion and second to accept the 2023 CAPER and submit the report to HUD. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All done.
Thanks.
All right. Now, I'll look to my staff members. Do we need a... Do we have... Can we... Do we need a different Zoom for the second topic?
She's working.
Okay, we just keep going? Okay, very good. Then we'll move to the next item. This is a public hearing regarding the agricultural zoning update, CPA 16. The purpose of the hearing is to accept and consider comment regarding proposed updates to the Comprehensive Plan Docket Item CPA 16 Agricultural Zoning Update. It's a hybrid public hearing. As I said earlier, those who are wishing to testify are either here or have emailed in comment. That's been summarized for the board, and we have that in our packets. We also have opportunity to testify virtually. If you do not wish to testify, but would like to listen and follow along, watch the livestream on the county YouTube channel. Ashley Arai, Director of Community Planning and Economic Development, will provide information on this topic, answer any board questions. I'll read names on the signup sheet. Once, who's up, and then who's on deck, so you can be ready to go. And assuming those on Zoom wish to testify, you will be... Names will be read aloud, following the folks who are in the boardroom. You'll have four minutes to testify. Time may not be given to another person. When you are called on, please state your name and the area of the county in which you reside. All right. Public hearing is now open. Ashley will present background information of the proposed amendments, summarize written comments submitted, and provide any additional information requested by the board.
Thank you, Commissioners, and good afternoon. This hearing is to take public comment on the agricultural zoning update, which is part of CPA 16, the Community Driven Review of Agricultural Policies and Programs, which was rated priority number three on the board's docket for 2024 to 2025. Next slide, please. Just for some broad background, designation of lands used or capable of being used for agriculture is a requirement under state law. Currently, Thurston County protects around 15,500 acres of land through designation and zoning for agriculture. And it's important to point out that agriculture zoning is just one of several tools that the county uses to protect agriculture, and it does so by limiting land subdivision and development. Next slide. This update has gone through two years of review and is intended to satisfy an appeal to Thurston County's existing agriculture zoning, specifically which soils are used for designating agricultural lands of long-term commercial significance. The review of soils has been accomplished with the finding that the farmland soils can be updated while the map does not necessarily need to be changed. The amendments being considered at this hearing include updates to include new prime farmland soils that result in zero acres of new long-term agriculture zoning, new policies that allow for properties to voluntarily opt into agriculture zoning. And just in relation to that opt-in clause, we did get feedback from the Commissioners to reach out to folks. We did receive one inquiry, but thus far did not receive any applications for that. Also want to point out that there's also been significant community interest, as witnessed here today with people showing up to testify in reevaluating the agriculture zoning as a tool for agriculture protection. While engaged in this review over the past few years, the CPED team and interested community members have explored many creative solutions and strategies for protecting farmland in Thurston County, with zoning being one of those potential vehicles. The CPED team is committed to staying engaged on farmland protection strategies through things like our grant-funded Working Lands Conservation Strategy work that just kicked off, our Habitat Conservation Program, which includes a whole section on working lands, as well as the voluntary stewardship program. Next slide, please. So I did mention that this has been... This project has been underway for two years, so just really quickly, wanted to run down what that process has entailed, and a thank you to everyone who's engaged thus far. We've had seven stakeholder group meetings, four community informational meetings, six Planning Commission work sessions, and one public hearing. We've had one community open house following that, plus three board work sessions leading up to updates to the maps to include all the new soils data, and then a work session this fall with the board. Public notice was placed for this hearing, and notice was sent out via web mail and on the website. Next slide, please. So this map does show the current extent of agriculture zoning in Thurston County with the updated soils list and other designation criteria. No new zoning is proposed. Next slide. And in terms of the written comments that we received up until noon today, we did receive 24. Most comments indicated general support, specifically for the opt-in clause, a request for the county to protect more farmland with agriculture zoning, as well as other tools. And even though there was support for the opt-in clause, there were questions about updating it. So here are some major themes that we heard. So support of the proposed amendments was shared. There were requests for the county to save more farmland. There were questions about enrolling in agricultural zoning and implications on tax reductions. There was a request for the county to consider farmlands of statewide importance and change the minimum density of our agriculture zoning to 40 acres. The staff response to that is that those updates were considered through the stakeholder workgroup process that kicked off this whole project and ultimately decided not to move forward with that. There were also requests to expand conservation programs, so any landowner who wishes to do so could place their property in conservation status. We are really excited that we have a grant to actually look at updating all of our conservation incentive programs, to try to make those things easier and remove any of the barriers. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, several requests were made to change the new voluntary enrollment language, so more people could opt in. In response to these comments, staff is proposing the policy language be updated slightly, so any landowner can opt into agriculture zoning. These updates would allow any property to enroll, as long as it was 40 acres. If it was smaller than 40 acres, we'd still allow them to enroll, as long as they're adjacent to existing agriculture zoning. The... And then there were concerns raised about how do we assess all lands, including existing agriculturally-zoned lands with this new criteria? And it's just important to point out that soils are just one criteria, so there's nothing in state law that would require prohibit the county from keeping property zoned for agriculture, or for considering new property in the future to be zoned for agriculture. And then lastly, there were concerns raised about the county not designating enough lands to maintain and enhance agricultural viability. This is another interesting thing that we found during our research over the last two years. We just recently completed a 10-year monitoring report for our voluntary stewardship program here at the county, which actually showed an increase in agricultural activities between 2013 and 2023. Our report does use different metrics. There's spatial... It uses spatial analysis that better informs on-the-ground activities than the USDA voluntary census data that comes out every five years. Furthermore, it's important to point out, and this is mentioned in our 10-year monitoring reports, that zoning is just one of the tools for supporting agricultural viability, and there are a number of tools that the county is using to do that. And then, last slide, please. So the... Thank you for letting me go through the comments and trying to provide some staff responses upfront. The action for the board today is to close the public hearing. This item, because it is in response to an appeal, we're hoping to get a decision by the end of the year. Otherwise, we might have to wait a whole nother year to resolve the appeal. So we are planning, with the board's direction, to bring this back for final action on December 17th with the rest of the Comprehensive Plan amendments that are being decided on this year. And that concludes my remarks. I'm happy to answer questions before we open it up.
Questions from the board?
Um, I have a question.
I saw Commissioner Fournier's hand, then I'll get Commissioner Mahia.
Okay.
Ashley, could you go back to the slides with the public comments on it? Am I on?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, there was a term that was mentioned, the farmlands of statewide importance. I was wondering if Ashley could elaborate on that concept?
Yeah, it's like a different category of soils that don't necessarily meet the criteria for prime farmland soils used by the Natural Resource Conservation Service. So it would be... Basically means that when we looked, almost any property within the county could be considered for agricultural zoning if you include those soils into the list.
Okay, so it's another term for when like that ag land or that land isn't qualified by soil type, but there would be another way to qualify it as valuable ag land by saying it's a farmland of statewide importance?
Yes, and there are recent changes to state law that allow counties to consider those soil types.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, if we could go back, what slide number is that, to slide number three?
Three.
As the Assistant County Manager Josh Cummings just elaborate on the first point a bit.
So, Ashley, you went over it, but it'd be helpful to engage a little more deeply on the future-wise appeal of our comp plan and why it's necessary to settle those next steps.
Yeah, so they appealed based on the list of soils that we include in our comp plan. And since we're currently in our periodic review for the next comp plan, we really want to resolve this last point so that we can move on with all of the other updates that the state is requiring us to look at.
Does the Planning Commission recommendation settle that appeal?
The board's final action will settle that appeal.
Commissioner Mahia.
Thank you. I... Ashley, I just wanted you to expand on the stakeholder group. How many stakeholders were, you know, asked to participate? Who was asked to participate, and for how long?
Yeah, thank you. I recall, I think, 12 people participated from a lot of different groups. We had representation there from the land trusts. We had individual farmers, and we had small land-holding farmers, as well as large land-holding farmers. We had Olympia Master Builders Association participate. So it was a very broad spectrum of stakeholders interested in agricultural protection here in the county. And we had seven meetings from October 2022 to February 2023, leading up to the Planning Commission process.
Thank you.
My question is, if we go back a little bit, like, in how we got to right where we are today, we had the appeal that we were dealing with. And then, if I remember correctly, the Planning Commission and kind of mulling over that was... Made a recommendation to the board to expand the look at agricultural policies. And that process then, you know, took time. And as I understand it, we're... We have this opportunity, this... You know, because you do these once a year, we have this opportunity to kind of wrap up the initial piece, which is the soils and the future-wise appeal. We can get that done on this cycle. And I guess, does... Is there still work related to the broader item that will continue into 2025? Or is that kind of... Are you pivoting toward... You said that there's gonna be a new item about looking at programs. And, I mean, just to kind of clarify this, this has been a more convoluted process than most docket items, just because of, you know, the Planning Commission asking us to expand it, and then we did expand it. And then we weren't sure what that was gonna look like, right? Stakeholder was about how to scope that. So am I remembering correctly that there still is discussion and potential work being done on other pieces of this broader topic that will go on in 2025?
Yep, that is correct. The... As part of the periodic review of the Comprehensive Plan update, we're looking at updating the whole chapter that addresses agricultural resource lands. And so there are changes being proposed there and open to additional changes. One of the unresolved pieces has been this. And so in terms of considering any other, you know, big shifts, we really need to have this piece decided. And then, as well as that, looking at a lot of programmatic updates through that grant-funded Working Lands Conservation Strategy. So looking at everything from how we work with our land trusts in our Conservation Futures Program, to how we really optimize those programs to protect farmland across the county. And that work is gonna continue into 2025. And we have been asking our land trust and conservation partners to engage in that process.
Okay. Any other board questions before we go to public comment?
Not moving.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then we will start with the signup sheet. And there's three of them, and I don't know which one's which, so I'll start with Rita Robison. And on deck will be Holly Gaidbaugh.
My name is Rita Robison. I live in Tumwater. My address is 3722 Holy Luke, Southeast Tumwater.
Can we stop you one second, Rita? Do we have the timer going? For our four minutes, so you know where you're at? One sec, we'll get with you.
Mine's short.
Okay. We gotta get this sorted out, though. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Go ahead.
Rita Robison, 3722 Holy Luke, Southeast Tumwater, Washington. Conserving agricultural lands is an important goal of the Growth Management Act. I grew up on apple farms along the Columbia River in central Washington's Douglas County. Now, high-priced homes sit on that prime agricultural land. It's devastating to see. Thurston County needs to do a better job of conserving farmland in the county, although it doesn't have as much agricultural land as Douglas, Shalan, Yakima, Lincoln. Although it doesn't have as much agricultural land as Douglas, Shalane, Yakima, Lincoln, Whitman Grant, and some other Washington counties, it does have important farmlands that are in danger of being lost. It's important for farm families in Thurston County to have the opportunity for economically viable working farms. I enjoy very much going to the farmer's market and seeing young farmers who are selling organic vegetables and fruits there. If the county doesn't improve its agricultural zoning, these young farmers won't have the opportunity to continue the farming operations they now have in rural Thurston County. We are fortunate to have the Growth Management Act in Washington State. When the legislature was debating the structure of what the act would be, they decided it would be local government-driven. That means cities and counties need to determine how they will meet the goals of the act within requirements set out by the state. To meet the GMA requirement to protect enough farmland to maintain and enhance the economic viability of the working farms in the county, then the county needs to increase the amount of protected farmland so there will be farms and ranches to contribute to the vibrancy of our remarkable county. Thurston County has lost enough farmland. The county needs to take action to stop this loss now.
Thank you. Holly, you're up. Oh, thank you. I'll make sure that's distributed. And then Diane King will be on, on deck. Holly, you're up.
I'm Holly Gabbah. I live in Olympia. I live in, my address is 1625 Sylvester Street, Southwest. And I'm here to ask you to do a better job of designating and conserving agricultural lands in Thurston County. I've lived in Thurston County for almost 50 years. As an Olympia City Council member in the 80s and 90s, and an original staff member of the Washington State's Growth Management Program, a member of the Growth Management Hearings Board, and in my retirement until recently, a board member of Future Wise, I have watched the steady loss of agricultural lands in Thurston County from these vantageous. Future Wise has documented the county between 2012 and 2022 lost 20,695 acres of farmland in rural unincorporated county. The county has 56,400 acres of farmland in rural Thurston County. However, due to inadequate designation criteria and conservation members, it has only conserved 15,500 acres. Besides providing enough farmland for current and future farmers, conserving agricultural land makes good economic sense. Out of the 39 statistics show that the county has a thriving agricultural industry. Out of the 39 counties in 2017, the market value of agricultural products sold in Thurston County was 195,44,000. It ranked 17th in total farm sales, second highest in the state in poultry and egg sales, third in aquaculture, and seventh in nursery sales, greenhouse, floriculture, and sod. One only has to try to get a parking place at the Olympia Farmer's Market on the weekend to realize how much local residents crave locally sourced agricultural products. One of the basic planning documents of all Thurston County jurisdiction should be the Sustainable Thurston Plan. One of its policies asks the county and the cities to conserve farmlands and develop compact urban areas. One of the plan's targets is for the county to support no net loss of farmland and to set a target that by 2035, no more than 5% of new housing will locate in rural lands, including agricultural lands. Both the cities and the county have difficult land use decisions to make that affect conservation of agricultural lands. To achieve these targets, the cities need to provide more incentives in zoning changes to provide more city residential developments. And the county will need to improve its agricultural land designations and conservation policies. You can right the ship. You can do this by updating the county's designation criteria and increasing the amount of farmland available for farmers and ranchers. And I've included some ways you can do that. As a former elected official, I know this decision is controversial and it will not be easy. It will take political courage to conserve enough land to make agriculture viable in the county in the long term. I appreciate your service to the county and the chance to comment on this vital issue. Please enter my comments in the record of this issue.
Thank you. You can hand them to the clerk and she'll make sure they get to where they need to go. Diane King, no, no. Okay, then we'll go to Jake Yancy with Marcy Cleaver on deck.
Hello, my name's Jake Yancy. My address is 2901 104th Avenue, Southwest. I'm a first-generation cattlemen, currently managing over 1,000 acres in a four-county area, with majority of that being right here in Thurston County. Unfortunately, due to our zoning requirements and such, there is no way that I can ever look to purchase any property as zoning prices and the continued development of agricultural lands continues to improve, to increase the values. Currently, with cattle and stuff in the county, it takes approximately 10 acres of year-round grazing for us to be able to produce one beef. Currently, I cannot grow the amount of beef that I'm able, and customers continue to reach out to us and want to buy. It's utterly frustrating as we end up hearing the downfall of the Future Wise lawsuit and stuff that says that if you're going to increase zoning and figure stuff out, that you have to look at soils. Well, just like as a parent and stuff of two wonderful daughters, if my school says that to keep my kids in school, they gotta not be little brats, it would be immature of me as a father to just say, okay, that I'm just not going to put my kids in school. I feel very much so that this is the county's approach currently with the opportunity that you have on hand and stuff to increase zoning, looking at soil types and such, as you've done with the conservation plan with the 15,000 acres that our county currently has, and to make those tough decisions to continue to look at that. The county currently states that they have $15,000 of ag-protected land. That was actually the words that are used up there. Unfortunately, in the four years that I've been watching the Ag Advisory Committee and testifying here as a citizen and stuff, zero of the letters of opposition for development submitted by your Ag Advisory Committee to not allow development on current agricultural lands has stood. Unfortunately, those properties continue to be turned into development, further decreasing the amount of properties that producers like myself can get at a lower rate. Many property owners continue to argue that by not allowing them to upzone their properties, you're taking money away from them and their families. I can tell you, as many of these properties and stuff that I work on accept large amounts of not only county-wide dollars, as they receive discounts on their property taxes throughout the year, but further and stuff on a state and national level, they receive funding from USDA, NRCS, and other government programs and stuff, all once again taxpayer-funded to improve improvements on their property, such as manure, storage facilities, barns, and structures, and everything else. It is always in the best financial interest of the property owner, if that is all that we are looking at, to upzone properties and turn into commercial development. For the future of agriculture and producers like myself and my daughters and stuff, there is no way at this sustained rate and stuff that the county can continue this. The proposed long-term zoning requirements that are sitting on there, many of the properties, even in the long-term zoning maps and stuff, are in conservation easements. Many of those conservation easements do not allow agricultural practices. So by designating them as agricultural lands and stuff does no value to producers such as myself. As a conservation grazer, the two-thirds of my property all have endangered species on. We've been the product of multiple college-level papers and stuff to include Evergreen State College on protection of such species as Oregon spotter frog. I highly encourage and staff, our county commissioners and state, to take these hard lines and stuff to continue the work that needs to be done. And to simply say that we're not going to proceed with looking at long-term ag to get out of a lawsuit loss and stuff is a loss not only of continued farmland for our county, but families like our own trying to make it. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcy Cleaver is up. Betsy Norton on deck.
Commissioners. When the county agreed to look at the loss of working lands about three years ago, there was a lot of hope in the community that you would all do something about it. It's been many years in the making that we've been losing farmland. Now it appears the commissioners are wavering on facilitating protection of more farmland. I hope this is not the case. It appears the county has found a way to get out from underneath the lawsuit. If this is the case, it is sad that so many people put in so many hours over the last couple of years for limited gain. Just the low-hanging fruit was addressed. The energy and brain power that looked at expanding the LTA could have been put to much more productive use, such as looking at funding sources to be used here in Thurston County to preserve working lands. It appears that time was needlessly wasted. That wasted time translates into more working lands being lost. And according to the census, it's about 2,000 acres a year here in Thurston County. This is sad. The county is now pursuing a broader working lands conservation strategy thanks to a grant it received. You have hired a consulting group, environmental science associates to conduct the work as well as making some other changes. You know that farmers and ranchers want to be compensated for their downzoning on their land. It appears the commissioners also want to pay those development rights. Consequently, the primary goal of those consultants, if their work is truly to make a difference, is to seek the documented funding sources and strategies to get those funds and the implementation strategies and tactics. This should be job one. Don't have their limited contract hours diluted by dozens of other demands. The funding part of their report needs to be very robust, not just the usual obvious sources of funds. It should include tactics to preserve working lands using those funding sources. Funding can clearly provide protections of working lands, hence the job should be, again, job one. Commissioners, here is your chance to have your cake and eat it too. Learn how to pay for those development rights with these consultants. Focus their efforts. Don't have the consultant write a big report that few people will ever read in its entirety. I hope we don't find ourselves in two years having made no measurable progress, as it appears today. Time is ticking away. And I think I have about two minutes left, so I'm going to do the first part of my, my talk. I want to make sure I got that said. So farmland's important to the county for many reasons, including the economy. It's not just a place for urban sprawl, as can be seen in the housing development setback of Old Highway 99 as you drive from I-5 towards Tenino. In the latest census data, as Holly recently pointed out, the market value of products sold here in Thurston County is over $190 million. That's huge. As you may know, the most sustainable economy is one in which the goods consumed in a region are produced in the same region using local resources and local labor. This is called an economy of permanence, and this is what we have with agriculture in our county. This is what farming and ranching does here. The county needs to protect working lands to preserve this economy, not just today, but for the future, because the population will grow and the needs for food and land will be more. There are many values, other values, that working lands have, but I won't get into those here. But as Ty knows, the runoff from tire chemicals kills salmon. And so we gotta stop all this impervious surface that runs into the streams where the salmon are and kills them off. And farmland has a place for that water to go into the ground and recharge our wells. I won't go down that rabbit hole. So just remember, time is ticking away. The erosion of our land, of our farmland is happening. So I encourage you to do all that you can, and in an expedient way. Don't, don't keep putting things off. It's 2,000 acres a year are just going away. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Betsy Norton, and on deck will be Stephen Connor.
Hi, my name's Betsy Norton. I live in Olympia in Thurston County. And I'd like to just talk a little bit. My specialty is rabbit holes, so I'm going to be talking about climate change and the environment. The context here is that with climate change, you guys are going to expect to have events like droughts and floods and that kind of dislocations. So all of this great planning about long-term ag, you know, if there are a lot of characteristics you're looking for, they may change over time. So I think it's really important to be flexible. The other piece of the context is that I went to a water panel by the League of Women Voters last week, and one of your planners pointed out that the lands of Thurston, rural Thurston County are where the groundwater is recharged. And so that important ecosystem service needs to be protected. So the, I have a couple of updates to the proposed agricultural zoning changes, which I hope you'll consider. First of all, multiple sections of the code allow warehousing as an allowed use on ag lands. This should change. There should be no commercial warehouses or distribution centers as an allowed use on LTA or NA lands. Warehousing should be restricted to industrial zone lands because most of the warehousing is not related to agriculture and because warehouses have an industrial environmental footprint. Secondly, please reduce the minimum parcel size from 20 to 5 acres for newly designated lands as LTA or NA. This removes a barrier to ag land expansion, giving Thurston County the latitude necessary to encourage expansion of ag land zoning wherever and whenever possible. Third, the county can protect our ag lands for the benefit of the wider community by creating and applying overlay zones for agricultural use and sustainability on top of LTA and other rural lands. These overlays allow the county to require covered areas to adhere to sustainable practices, encourage targeted uses, discourage conversions to development, and can compensate landowners. They're a vehicle to recognize and preserve the ecosystem services from those lands that benefit the larger community. Top of the list of those ecosystem services are groundwater recharge and stormwater management, important to residents and very costly to replace by the county. In my written comments, I have links that you can look at for Watcom County's. Watcom County has an agricultural overlay, so you can take a look at that. Please add these three items also to the environmental considerations. First of all, wherever possible, ag lands should be encouraged to be managed for dual use as wildlife habitat. Wherever feasible, ag lands should be, should include wildlife-friendly dual use of the lands and the built structures as host sites for renewable energy. And at all times, the LTA or NA designation assigns to the landowner the responsibility to act as a well-informed environmental steward of their land for the good of larger community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stephen Connor with Loretta Saponin on deck.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to comment. I, sorry, I don't have a scripted comment, wasn't prepared for this, but I'll do the best I can. My family has the Bayfield Resources and the Woodland Company. We have approximately 700 acres and 10,000 feet of waterfront on the Doffelmeyer Peninsula. We've currently put 205 acres and 3,000 feet of shoreline in Gulf Harbor in conservation with the Capital Land Trust, and an additional 15 acres with the Department of Natural Resources and a repair and easement. Both of these activities were proactive. We were approached by the land trust. We were approached by DNR, and we're currently working with DNR, who wrote us a personal letter with my name addressed to it, because they want to purchase 325 acres of our property to join Woodard Bay and Gulf Harbor in a conservation corridor. That area is exactly the area that was previously on the maps to be zoned long-term agriculture. My family, I've been there since I was six years old. It's all I can do to make a living. You know, I can't find any help. No one will fix the fences. No one will take the crops out of the field. There's just no one to work. You know, they can't cut firewood unless they're 18 years old. And, and this idea of making land viable for young farmers to get started by taking money out of my pocket to downzone it so that they can afford it just seems disingenuous. You know, these are resources that public values. They're not public resources. They're my resources. And the county should be like the state and the land trusts, and they should come to me and they should say, Stephen, let's work together. Let's see what we can do to save this land. Let's see what we can do to save this land. Not every time I turn around feel like I'm being blindsided and bludgeoned by the county, you know? Between this and now I'm fighting the Shoreline Management Act, it just, you know, who's going to do all this work? Who's going to manage all these farms? You know, unless you give them the land and take it away from me and leave me bankrupt, you know, the only reason we're going is because the land trust and the DNR compensated us fair market value for our lands. Our conservation easement, we can still farm. Our conservation easement, we can still law, but we have to do it sustainably. The only problem is, I can't find anybody to do it, you know? So my fences are in disarray, my pastures are in disarray, my machinery's all old and broken down, and, you know, I'd like to work with the county to figure something out, but I don't think taking people's lands by downzoning is the way to do it. You know, that's all I have to say. Be happy to work with you.
Loretta Sepinon, and then I will...
Hello, I'm Loretta Sepinon. I live in southeast Olympia, Washington. I want to start with some appreciations. I appreciate the action you took one year ago to update the development code language that relates to LTA lands. Your changes made that land use more flexible, and that flexibility increases the economic viabilities of our farms. I also appreciate that this proposal has in it that no-cost opt-in to the LTA lands, and especially if you can make some small changes, as was mentioned by your staff, to make it so that's a maximum flexibility for which lands can be voluntarily added and as, because this program is a voluntary program and not a requirement for people. Two years ago, on behalf of the Community Farmland Trust, I served on your stakeholder group for this LTA project, and we're considering the designation criteria. Many of us expected that today you'd be voting, as a result of our work and the work of the Planning Commission, you'd be voting to change some of those criteria. You'd be voting to add LTA land, and you would be committing to funding sources that would compensate landowners as their land changes from LT, from what it is to LTA zoning. More than a year ago, the Planning Commission brought forward recommendations to change criteria such as the smaller block size of 40 acres as opposed to what it is right now, which is 320 acres. The changes they recommend, recommended to you would have resulted today in more than at least 2,000 acres and perhaps more of LTA land. That's not the proposal that we see today. In terms of compensation, 33 years ago, the people who were in your chairs, the county commissioners at that time, addressed the compensation for farmland owners when they created Nisqually Ag Land, which is part of our LTA project. The board voted at that time to sell bonds so that they could purchase, they'd had the funds, so they could purchase easements on nearly 1,000 acres of our farmland in the Nisqually Valley. And over time, those bonds were repaid from our Conservation Futures revenues. That kind of stream of funding, having identified it and having it available, is not on the docket today. It's with a sense of disappointment that I now turn my attention to the future. Earlier this year, you authorized this project, which your staff has talked about, the working lands conservation strategy. The consultants, staff, and community members, and I am one of those community members, we're working to create a report for you that hopefully will be ready for you by early 2026. That's still a long time away, but it will be ready for you by then. That report will outline new and expanding programs, and it will include details about exactly the steps that you need to take to create new and expanded revenue streams that you could use for land conservation. I'm looking to your leadership in early 2026 to adopt the best things that come out of that report, so you can take the steps to developed revenue to better protect our farmland and our timberland. These lands benefit every one of us. We face challenges of the future, and we need our working lands more than ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the boardroom that didn't get a chance to sign up? Okay, I see Phyllis Farrell's hand up. You're first, Phyllis.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioners. Phyllis Farrell, I live in unincorporated Thurston County in the Sunwood Lakes area, and I support protection, obviously, of agricultural lands. Thurston County is expecting growth, and the county, I understand, is under pressure to rezone agriculture or potential agriculture lands to accommodate housing and commercial growth. We've been losing agriculture land, even though residents in the Thurston County survey want to preserve the rural character of the county. We should have policies and funding that support and promote local farmers in keeping agriculture lands in agriculture production. I urge you to adopt policies that preserve agriculture zoning, provide incentives, which requires a funding source, as was previously mentioned, for long-term agriculture designations, and promote agricultural businesses such as farm stands, food hubs, and food processing facilities. Thank you for this difficult work that you are undertaking, and I appreciate your service.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Paris McCloskey. I live in northeast Olympia. I believe that the county does and should play an important role in farmland preservation. The county has made changes to the benefit of agriculture as recently as a year ago with revised development codes. That does not mean the county has no more work to do. I had hopes that the CPA 16 project could have expanded LTA designation to several thousand acres, adding to the current 15,000 LTA-protected areas. I'm disappointed with the decision to add no new parcels to LTA lands and at the lost opportunity this represents. The Board of County Commissioners could have used this tool that is used on a greater portion of agricultural soils in other counties to the county's best soils for growing food and fiber. Landowners told you that having land designated as LTA results in lost land value. You could have considered revenue sources used in other counties to purchase developments' rights as compensation for this loss, but by choosing to designate zero additional acres, you close the door at the action, at that action that provides landowners and the community with the permanent benefit. I believe the community would have supported an increase in Conservation Futures taxes, for example, back to the very low tax rate when originally funded rather than current level half the original rate. I support the voluntary opt-in part of this proposal that allows landowners to voluntarily put land under LTA designation. As currently written, however, few or no farms will meet the criteria. I ask you to broaden the pool of eligible landowners for the voluntary option by making it available to all landowners regardless of soil types for parcels of 40 acres or more or 20 acres or more if next to other voluntary LTA or current LTA parcels. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion by the board, this juncture? Commissioner, okay?
Can I just correct a thing that I said? I said the total of...
Holly, yeah, can you come to the microphone just so the people...
In Thurston County's agricultural products was 190,000. It's 190 million.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I, thank you for everyone who came and provided public comment. I guess my request is going to be to have a follow-up work session based on the comments that we've received today. I'm happy to send some of my questions in advance to Ashley so she can better prepare for this. And then, that's just simply my recommendation is to have a follow-up work session on this before anything gets approved.
Our timeline on this is December 17th, is that correct, Ashley?
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
Commissioners, yeah, we can absolutely bring our CPED team together for the commission's benefit to have a work session.
Okay. Do you have checks under that?
No, I agree with that.
Commissioner Fordy.
Yeah, I agree with that. I just had additional comments.
Go ahead.
Whenever that's, I appreciate all the public comments. Preserving ag land is important to me. I just, I want to encourage everyone to look at it holistically, and, you know, as I've done a lot of talking with different ag producers, just designating something long-term ag doesn't necessarily help the ag economy when we've got this, this whole ecosystem that's missing pieces to support the producers. And, you know, like we've talked about it quite a bit in South Thurston County, where with, you know, the ranchers not having the processing facilities, not having cold storage facilities, not having shipping facilities. So, you know, when people talk about, you know, not wanting more industrial or commercial development, that there is an element of ag industrial and commercial development that's needed to support these ag lands. So if you want to keep these ag lands producing, you need to make them able to, you know, have a higher yield and produce more by putting in the infrastructure that's needed to support those ag businesses, because just, just having land doesn't necessarily get you into the markets that you need, get your products processed a way that is going to get them into, you know, the hotels or the, you know, the school kitchens and things like that. So there, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a big puzzle, and I know that CPED is looking at all those things, and they've made a lot of movement in that way. I just, I want every, you know, the public included to, you know, know, it's, there's a much more holistic way that we need to be looking at how to support ag lands.
Okay, there's no decision point here for today. We'll have a follow-up work session. We have a potential action point on December 17th with regard to the proposed changes, and I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I would move to close a public hearing. Second?
Second. Any objection? I'll call for the board in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, closes the hearing. Thanks to everybody for being here today. We appreciate your comments.